Okay, I will call the 2024 budget hearing to order. I will declare a forum of trustees, we're all here anyway. And then we'll have the presentation of the 2024 Village of Fort Edwards budgets.
What we have in front of you is a copy when I see today from Diane and the draft. First, I'm looking, oh, I want to go to the village. It's a village Fort Edwards, she's written draft on the corner, print eleven thirty twenty 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 three. It's a cover sheet on the villages, the full budget for twenty twenty four. And if you, when this is the same thing that was presented to the trees as a whole. And the basically is we're up to a maximum levy limit. And I'm seeing that it's, uh, both taxes here, um, twenty three point eight nine cents for twenty twenty four for it, which is include all the taxation. And I gotta find us down here in Village, we're looking at a point, I mean, in, uh, my, we're here, nine point five eight, nine point fifty nine cents for thousand, I think. Yes. Well, that's our nine dollars and fifty three cents. Increase. No, that's total. Okay. It's actually, if you look at last year to twenty twenty three, it was fourteen point nine two. And the twenty twenty four is nine point three four. If, uh, and now I'm going to make, I have to ask Diane correctly, I think you had a reval during this last year. Okay, when you have a reval, the whole community, you'll see, um, in that portion, you all see your, that prop, that always should happen, you know, a reval, they've taken a revaluation of a community so that one number. And then you go through revaluation, everybody's, and everybody's property gets reassessed. And it's based on the market process, and therefore that'll, most properties get increased based on that market as above. So indirectly then, if you haven't done a revaluation for a long period of time, you then see a drop in your rate. That's my, and I think I'm on what Diane mentioned. And so that's what we have for twenty twenty four for a village. And basically, and you can see there on, because of the reval, there are a lot of negative numbers. But bottom line is that you look at the dollar amount we're taxing for the, for this year. Very much the same way we, I think we taxed in the past year, is that correct?
Yeah.
Allowed to tax, so we're, we're, we're at a levy limit, so we can tax no more. But it basically, the rate looks like it's going down because of the revaluation. When actually people see their property tax, then they're gonna see it very much the same. Collection dot dollar could be up, could be down based on your revaluation. Any trouble? That's my presentation. Unless there's some other.
Yeah, so, um, public comments on the budget for twenty twenty four.
I'm only doing the
Do you have your hand up?
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I guess a couple of comments, um, some things that I would, hopefully guys would think about. My name's Joe Terry. Yeah, good to see you. Longtime Village resident and previous Village administrator. Couple of things. One is the lack of investment into the heavy equipment and street maintenance funds. I've come before the board the last several years, and this question started about that. Back in about two thousand one, Scott McCallum kind of changed the process for levy limits and such. Prior to that, if there was a purchase of a piece of equipment, they'll continually adjust the levy. One year it would be high, and the next year it'd be a little lower. But to avoid that, we meticulously started, and at the time it was, it was, um, not commonplace, I think it's much more commonplace, is to establish, yeah, you can call it depreciation fund. Uh, we called it a heavy equipment fund. And we forecasted an out of over thirty years and planned for ten. So that we were investing, the village was investing the same amount per year from the budget. And was able then to plan on replacing it. And that worked really well for years. I'm trying to think back, and maybe Diane knows. I think the only piece of equipment that we borrowed for since about two thousand one might have been the jet. We didn't borrow for the tractor backhoe, we didn't borrow for a loader. Uh, we didn't have to, because we were setting aside between sixty and seventy thousand dollars a year to establish that fund. It was reviewed annually. So, you know, it's not shown in the budget directly, but, you know, I, I reviewed the the capital plan. And, you know, that fund has not been vested to at an appropriate level maintain the village's fleet now for several years. And as a result, it looks like you're gonna borrow hundred thousand, hundred fifty thousand to replace the loading. You know, the village isn't anywhere near its debt capacity. But when you start looking at the interest on debt, at, at the rate, I mean, the village has borrowed, what, with this hundred and some thousand, it'll be one point four million dollars. Um, that's a lot of borrowing. And the interest on that debt may soon exceed the revenues from, for example, the U.S. So between the, the equipment capital outlay and the street capital outlay, I really suggest a, a good look back at how that worked. Uh, back in twenty fifteen, how many other communities had a sustainable street funding program? Sustainable equipment funding program? We were one of those rare communities that had that. Took a while to get there. And given the lack of investment over the last several years, it may take a while to get back there again. But we are one of the highest taxed communities in the county. Doesn't help that we're also one of the highest taxed counties in the state. And I, I really like you all to seriously consider returning, uh, those programs and investing them. At the end of the day, you're either paying yourself or you're paying Diane. When you're looking at a fleet of equipment, it's not like you're purchasing a loader. It doesn't matter if the loader is brand new or if it's ten years old, moving snow, moving dirt, it's part of it. And that's how it was sold in the, in the great place. Um, on that same note, with the street replacement capital outlay, I have some of the same concerns. As most of you know, when the TIF was developed, I was part of that. And the timing was creative, so that the TIF was going to generate revenue from day one. The TIF was started immediately after Erko purchased school forest property that was zero value, now has value. There was no development that TIF was gonna generate. And it did. There's a number of TIF projects, and as most of you probably know, TIF is really intended, this is an industrial TIF. It's intended to provide infrastructure to promote industry, right? And if the TIF is exceeding, you're spending money on some other projects. Looking at the projects that you're proposing for this next year, Second Street, North of Bunker. And it's, it, it's not benefiting an industry. That's the thing, you can't use TIF on sports within a half mile because the bridge to the island is in the TIF. And that particular street's within a half mile, so it's a clever way to use the funds. But you've got Wisconsin River Drive, it's old. And its infrastructure is obsolete. And it's over a million, it's gonna be old well over a million dollars to rebuild that. TIF is gonna be done in a few years, a year or two. There, there's gonna be a lot of infrastructure that's left. TIF won't have cover. So that we can replace our local streets. And instead of continuing to fund local streets over the years, the village is slowly pulled money away from that capital investment, right? The village has twenty miles worth of streets. If you can get your streets to last forty years, you need to rebuild a half mile street here. Right, you need, depending on what you're doing, you're gonna need three hundred and fifty to four hundred and fifty thousand at least annually to maintain the infrastructure that we have. Over the last several years, that's been reduced to zero this budget. Now, you've gotten away with it because TIF has provided income. What are you gonna do with the TIF providing no income? Right, and the right answer isn't, well, that's another important problem. You're gonna borrow for it? You're gonna do nothing and let the streets deteriorate? Or are you gonna figure out how to cut something else? So I'm concerned about that, and I hope that you all can take a real close look at, you know, at the ramifications of not funding these programs for a number of years. When these temporary funding mechanisms dry up, are you gonna have a plan? Or are we just gonna borrow until we get our, our bottom line? So, so that's that. The third thing I wanna mention, and I mentioned it last year. And it didn't gain traction, um, because of the statement by the administrator at that time. But that is, the village borrowed, what, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to cover normal operating expenses, wastewater. Wastewater utility revenues, not sufficient to fund the operation of the wastewater treatment facility and wastewater classes. Instead of adjusting the rates, the village decided to borrow that money. And the loan for the plant is just about up, so, you know, in a few years, you won't have that loan. I think this might be last year. You won't have it, and so potentially then have the village utility then continue to pay that off. The problem is for the last couple of years, and this budget included, is that the property taxpayers are ten percent of the community is not served by the sewer system. Right, there's a few of us in this room. The president, myself, we're not served by that, we can't use it even if we want. And yet, we're paying for it. And the two biggest customers that this village has are the county schools. And neither pays properly. So by requiring the local property taxpayers to pay this loan back, subsidizing City of Marshall. You're subsidizing Wisconsin Rapids. You're subsidizing County Senate. I don't know why you would want to do that. The other issue is that when you start to look at, uh, utility payment versus property taxes. Properties with higher value obviously, more. Take a look at especially some of the properties that aren't currently served by sewer. And you calculate based on the levy, what they would be paying towards this loan. They're paying more than what some of you pay annually for your sewer. So they're subsidizing, also you. The biggest issue I have is we've got, you know, there's a recent widow that lives on Seneca Road. Her husband worked for this village for his entire career. She's subsidizing everybody else that has sewers. So my ask there is pull that out of this budget. Have the utility covered. So that just those rates, right, the wastewater rates are, are what they are. You also have property taxpayers that pay sewage rates that are paying more for that loan in property taxes than they do annually. So they're, they're also subsidizing others as well. So i- if it's not tonight, because, you know, you need to get this passed, you need to get up to the county. Really would ask that you consider a budget amendment and potentially make that adjustment and help start refunding some of these other funds that and dried up. And the last item I wanna talk about real briefly, proposal to add a fourth officer. Um, I've had some conversations with Scott. I understand that there's a demonstrated need for an SRO officer. Whether that's full time or not is, is the variable. I, I sure don't think so. I look at the city of Wisconsin Rapids, over four thousand students, two SRO officers, we have four hundred. By the equal contact, you need a one-fifth time SRO. But again, there may be a demonstrated need. If there is a demonstrated need, I would ask that you consider adjusting priorities. If you need that officer in the schools, put the officers. If there's a call, they can even, and attend the call. I understand that there are some other funding to help pay for this. But there are some real shortcomings in this budget. And i- it, it's hard for me because I, you know, I've got over thirty-five years of experience in public works and thirty years in public administration. And it's hard to watch the communities step closer and closer to the cliff, just not be aware of it. And, and, you know, with the experience that I have, that's what I see. And I, I hope that, um, there's careful consideration before we start expanding some services, to recognize that other services that we have had have been cut. Ramifications of which aren't entirely obvious yet, but it will be. And that in order to be competitive, that we've gotta be, we've gotta be responsible, and we have to set a level of service that, that will promote the community and allow it to move forward. So I've taken up your time tonight, I appreciate you giving me more than maybe the two or three minutes.
Anybody else for public comment? Then I will close the public hearing portion of the meeting, and then also without objection, adjourn that at seven twenty. All the Village Board meeting. Hasty Brandon, here. Hasty McGregor, here. Hasty Moore, here. Hasty Ragby, here. Hasty Sailor, here. Hasty Verko, here. They'll ask us to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then in remembrance of all those who have lost their lives and want a duty to protect us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, that is just so.
Okay, number four, I will ask for motion to approve the consent and move out of the meeting minutes for the November fourteenth for meeting, the multi-bills of previous month's journal entries.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mary Key, second. Second, back for a minute, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, uh, public comment on agenda items for this agenda.
The airport hit a grant.
I heard the airport hit a grant.
Anything else for public comment? No, okay. Um, President's report. Um, I just wanna say thank you for everyone's work with working on this budget. Um, I know it wasn't easy. Um, there's a lot of different moving pieces and some decisions that needed to be made, so thank you to everybody for that. I saw on the Village website today that nomination papers for the spring election are available for pickup in Diane's office, and they must be completed by the second, right, the end of day?
Yep.
End of day of the second. And then just a reminder that our tree lighting ceremony is this Sunday. So just make sure they're stepping down to support everybody that's worked on that. Um, that starts at three, there's gonna be games, hot dog sales, and then the high school band and choir will be down here to perform as well. And Santa will light the tree at five o'clock. So we'll go into commission and committee reports, uh, President's or who, or President's? Haste is our, the airport commission.
Oh, we did not have a meeting, like, maybe it was Thursday.
Um, Chairman Stewart, Police and Fire Commission.
Good evening, um, we have not met since your last board meeting. We're gonna meet this Monday, but we, uh, have, um, got a little work. Um, as I think I've mentioned to you all previously, uh, we're in the promotional process. We have, but we can't not possess the minimum educational training requirements stated in the current, um, respective rank position description. Now, these job descriptions were written, uh, produced by the fire department and the previous village administrator we made in twenty twenty one. Um, those documents, um, indicate that they are both approved by the PFC and the Village Board. We are currently in the process of determining the state of Wisconsin minimum educational requirements for department officers. And when I say officers, what I mean is the ranks of lieutenant, captain, assistant chief, and chief. We, we recognize that, you know, as a city or a village, you do have the, um, right to establish a higher standard of training and education for your employees. And that's fine. But you can't do it the other way. You can't hire them the state of Wisconsin. You can't do it the other way, you can't be lower than the state. So if the minimum your educational requirements have to be at what the state gives. So what we're doing right now is we are researching and defining exactly what the state says fire officers minimum training requirements are. And if those standards are less than what this position descriptions are currently in place in the village, then, um, we may make a recommendation to the FHR committee that we revise those and lower them to the state minimum standards instead of, if, if they are in fact higher than the state minimum. So that's the project we're working on right now. And, um, in, in other work, I know the, uh, PFC lead is on a team along with Chief Warden, conducted an interview, uh, I believe it was last night for an entry level fire candidate. Um, we expect to receive a report about, about that interview as well as a completed phase one and phase two background check by the chief leader for our meeting, which is this Monday. That's about all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Chairman Stewart? Thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Hummel with the Nephew Lake District update, do you have anything?
Thanks, real brief. Um, we, uh, on Thursday, we're having our follow-up meeting with the fire plant study that will lead to a management plan going forward. A couple of times, uh, here with our
Any questions for Mr. Hummel?
What time is that? Uh, one, uh, my left word name. Give me the same deal. If you may shoot that there. Okay, it's here. I mean, it's here, it's here. It's all gonna be, uh, so the, the meeting is driven by the consultant who did the fire plant study. And it's not an official, I mean, they're not driving a meeting, so it's all gonna be on I will get that information, I think it's ten o'clock.
Thank you. Great, Hasty Randy, Public Works Committee.
Uh, Public Works did not meet. Our next meeting will be December twenty seventh at nine thirty AM.
For, and we want to be public safety.
Yes, we met, uh, I'm looking at today's, Tuesday, December fifth, no, November twenty eighth. And Chief Warden, uh, gave us an update for the fire department and, uh, our call volume for the department's still on pace with last year. Um, engine two went in for service. Um, valves and pressure gauges replaced and rebuilt. I commented on Thanksgiving dinner and thanked the retirees for cooking the, I wonder if we're meal. There was a first responder training and, uh, uh, their annual mask fit test as well. And then, um, an update on Lexi Paul is they're working to update sixty policies and will probably, uh, result in us continuing Lexi Paul, um, whose contract renews, uh, next month. Um, Chief Drew gave his report, uh, for the, uh, police department and, uh, commented on a new software called Badger Tracks, which is a, a way to, to make, uh, the filing citations more efficient between, uh, devices. Um, and then among their complaints, uh, the school had thirty-three complaints at the middle and I didn't rule this past month as well. Um, for old business, we, uh, we discussed that, I, I believe Diane and, and Chief, that the fire contracts are in the process of being finalized for next year. If that's correct, all the fire If that's correct, all the fire that we had talked about, but discussed that we need to make sure that those get on the agenda in appropriate time so we don't pass them up, um, for previous years, but I think we're on the way getting those settled, and that's our fire contract with the other surrounding municipalities, uh, for our shared services. And then our ad hoc, um, committee will have its first meeting this Thursday at, at five, and, uh, when we will, uh, do some initial orientation and some definitions about some of the things that we'll be working on as well, and that's, that's, uh, uh, for the bylaws of the fire department, so.
Any questions for Public Safety?
Thank you, President, this is all on your ad hoc committee.
Okay, uh, myself, uh, village administrator, uh, Chief Warden, uh, Scott Stewart, Dustin Lees. One, two, three, four, five.
Who's you?
Uh, Dustin Lees.
I just have a question about the fire contracts, um. Is it every year that it's about now that we are finalizing contracts?
No, I mean, it should have been done already. In September, we have to get the equalized values, and I do the calculations, send it to the chief. Then something happened that they, they didn't hear anything. They are all drafted and ready to go, if you have them.
Is that going to affect the municipalities and the villages?
I don't know, I did email each of them to let them know.
Anything else for Public Safety? Your, your, uh, your next meeting is? If you don't.
Well, it's on the minutes, let me see, uh, uh, January second, January, uh, Tuesday, January second at five PM.
Okay, um, Chairman's, uh, Parks and Recreation.
We didn't have a meeting really in this month, the airport, the community, the next meeting is December twenty seventh at ten AM following public works. And anybody interested, we're going to be going into detail on the recreational program. Starting with, excuse me, sea salt caramel, uh, crossing Highway fifty-four and our road. Uh, MFA will be here, and hopefully we're going to have a, uh, detailed report. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, uh, planning, legislature, property, and IT.
We also didn't have a meeting, and so we don't have our next one scheduled, what time did you say?
Tuesday, Tuesday at five.
So would you guys be open to Tuesday at six for pit?
Anything?
It will be Tuesday the second at six o'clock.
Chairman Randkey for Finance and Human Resources.
Okay, we met.
Thursday?
Thursday, so time is just ticking away. Uh, we met Thursday. And uh, some of the comments that I have is that, you know, we went over the last two months, we've been operating a little bit in the red, so that was mentioned. Day-to-day operations without the TIF grant and the legacy grant. Um, if we didn't have those, we would probably have to be borrowing there just for day-to-day operations. So, um, we talked about that, um, we talked about uh, that Du- Dwayne would put out an email so there won't be much spending for the rest of the year, did you put that out?
I'd be done yet.
It's got to be done, okay, so we're kind of, kind of tight thing here until the end of year spend. And we put a note that out. Other than that, I do have a couple motions. Uh, my first motion is to approve a three percent wage increase for all staff. And I'd like to put that motion out there.
Hopefully, Randy Key, second by Sir, we discuss it. Have anything?
I guess the only thing I have is when we did have discussion prior in the FHR meeting, um, Justin McGregor had mentioned that, you know, cost of living, it kind of fluctuates that it was a three point two percent. And, you know, I guess I don't want to make statements for you, but, you know, he was concerned that we're not able to keep up with cost of living, you know, further budget things, what would we do in the future? Again, I think we know what we have to do, we have to look at cuts. So, but I think three percent is a good increase.
Thank you.
Thank you, President, it was seven point six percent in July, and then twenty twenty-three is a rollercoaster year, nothing else, nothing else. Moving on, actually, three point two.
Anything, any other discussion on the three percent wage increases? With a motion by Randy Key, second by Sir, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well, the second motion that came out of the committee was to approve a two percent wage adjustment for the full-time police officers. We have two of.
Almost that motion.
Motion by Brandon. Second.
I'll second that.
Second by McGregor, discussion.
I, this is also a discussion in the FHR meeting. I'm not opposed to giving them an increase, I was, uh, I actually asked for an amendment there, which was second. But my, my feeling was forty cent an hour increase plus three percent that all employees would get, which would be about a four point something, I can't recall, though I know, uh, increase for our officers. I guess in, and I'll just give you some of my reasonings for that, is one, I do think that our officers are important. I think all our employees are important, um, they all have different categories and different job titles. But I think that, you know, one of our important employees here, our trustee, who I had brought up earlier about giving her a bonus, and maybe some of the other people who really stepped up when we lost our administrator earlier this year, and one of the things I recall is our trustee, our treasurer said that would be fine, but I don't want a bonus because I already put that in our budget to balance our budget. So for that person to even decline a bonus, I thought was very commendable, and I know our budget's tight. So that was one of the reasons, like I said, I don't think that, you know, giving them something, yes. If we can provide more in following years, yes, but, um, that is the reason, and I guess, uh, you know, if you want to vote on that, otherwise I would like to try to amend that, also, I don't know if I can, I don't know how that works. Former president.
So, then, um, you just, uh, address the chair. As you are making motion, spade it, when you move second.
My motion would be to adjust the, give the officers forty cents an hour more plus the three percent, I'd like to amend that motion.
Uh, amended motion for forty cents plus the three, recent wage and adjustment, and then the three percent. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Second by Sailor, discussion.
That's the, that's the three percent we just, right, you're saying.
We already gave the three percent, they will get that automatically.
Yeah.
And then you're just saying, continuing with the three percent and then adding that forty cents.
Correct.
So, we just wanted to put the, the entire three percent wage, what is that, an increased, so, this is the possibility?
That's a.
Fifty thousand? Forty cent increase. Twenty forty eight.
It was like a one point something more. Yeah, about two.
Anybody else?
Thank you, President, my main contention why I was opposed to the started off with three percent raise and separate the full-time police officers with five percent. That's the type of thing that we would do, we're a line of modus operandi. Seen it over thirty-seven years. And then my feelings is strong, I shared a few. For meeting, I think, the three percent raises for everybody, and adjustments have been given off and on for as long as I've been. And I fully support the three percent adjustment. It's, it's, uh, other employees have gotten it in the past. Police officers have gotten it in the past, village employees for EPW have gotten it. And I just think that it's, it's a thing to do. Talked about it, it came out of Caleb's committee, it went to your committee, has, uh, five percent, it went down to three percent, two percent, still five percent for the officers, but I can live with that, and I feel it's not really a good thing after all the talkings I've been doing about it. I understand where one is coming from, but all other sauce spot in my heart.
Anybody else? There any candidates on that? Okay, so you're going to call the vote for the amended motion, forty cents, um, the forty cent instead of the two percent, so we're going to do that one, see what that ends us, so. All in favor for the amended motion of the forty cent adjustment for the full-time police officers. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
All aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So that goes back to the original motion of a two percent wage adjustment for the full-time police officers. That was made by Brendan, seconded by McGregor, and for the discussion.
What is that, two percent?
I can't remember right, I created a lot, I think combined three percent, two percent adjustment, something like a thousand fifty percent, your advantage around it.
Yes. I can't remember.
Hmm, we have an E. We go off people's. Do you have your computer up?
So it's about the three, it'd be about six.
Okay, so, shoot, the answer is, okay.
I don't think it, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't think it's that high, I'm, I'm wanting to get my computer out.
Was any objection, without objection, can we go off table to Chief, you're setting the actual numbers?
What?
The numbers of how much that increase is for two percent.
I think it was, uh, a thousand fifty percent.
Yeah, I was going to ask, without objection.
The two percent would be fifty-nine cents. Additional for two thousand eighty hours, um, which would be twelve hundred and eighty-three. No, but, but the two percent that were, that would be fifty-nine cents per hour, that's without benefits. So it'd be twenty-four hundred, I forget, twenty-four hundred and thirty-four dollars total, plus benefits. That would be Diane.
That's what we added.
Does that help everybody?
Yes.
Addition.
Twenty-four hundred, that's with benefits.
Yeah.
Yeah, total for four.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? Hearing now that we will go to the motion uh, to approve the two percent wage and adjustment for the full-time officers, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I don't know how you do this, what goes first, the three percent or the two percent? You know what I mean, I mean, I just can do five percent, like, that's right, we're not doing the three. We were doing the forty cents, yeah, okay, okay, that's.
Other than that, our next meeting will be, oh, January second, no, excuse me, January fourth. Let me see, what's going on here?
I'm January fourth at four.
January fourth.
Four to like.
Fireworks, January fourth at four o'clock.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So moving on.
Maybe a email sent out by President.
Sure, I will do that, and then I will also do the calendar invites to everybody with the Zoom stuff, I do that tonight, or. Okay, number eight, motion to approve the twenty twenty-four water utility budget as presented.
In front of you, you'll have a draft that, uh, printed at eleven thirty, eleven thirty twenty twenty-three. As you look into the lower right-hand column, the, uh, two columns, you got Diane, that the estimate for twenty twenty-three in the actual probably, uh, debt service charges, intergovernmental, and, uh, looking at a, in, a revenue of five hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred seventy-two, very little over last year's estimated revenue. Turn to the next page, and just put together the expenditure. Expenditures based on now the operations of the, of the water utility. And, uh, actually, the total, um, expenditures comes down to four hundred and forty-seven thousand nine forty-seven, which is just a little bit over last year's about almost eight thousand, seven thousand, eight thousand dollars. Well, that is, that is what's in front of you for consideration for the water utility budget. And the reason I did not present this as a public hearing and the water utility and the sewer utility is the enterprise fund. And they are presented as, you're voting as utility commission. Village Board is a member, or are, are they, are the members of the utility commission, so, um, that's why I didn't present it. And if anybody has questions, I think, that has to, to president of public health and budget.
Okay.
Motion. Budget.
Second. Motion by Randy Key, second by Brendan, discussion on the water utility budget. Okay, questions done?
I do. I mean, when you're presenting this, where's the, help me understand what the board has control over here, does that make sense, like?
The village board has control, the general fund and utility fund and the sewer fund. When you, you're, you're operating as the village board, the village board has the authority to also be your operating as an utility commission. It's underneath one head, that's how you operate in this village, different communities are separated, but it's one, you know, it's not tied to the general fund, separate, it's separate, uh, the, excuse me, general level, it's just a separate budget and separate entity. You make your, you do make your revenues based off of your rates and the expenditure, that's a rate, and then the water utility is also has a caveat to it, and it does have the public service commission has control, when you want to make a rate increase or portion of it, they have a control of the comments on, you got to present it to the public service commission. I don't know how often the committee has done that, Diane, you need to tell me. Every year, because you can do a annual small increase and you, you do it that way, otherwise you don't have to go through the large process trying to get sewer, water rates increased. I can give you an explanation for the next one.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the water utility budget? Okay, hearing now, motion by Randy Key, second by Brendan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That one carries. So number nine, motion to approve the twenty twenty-four wastewater budget as presented.
Yeah.
That motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by Brendan, second by McGregor, discussion.
Uh, I have a comment to, to verify the wastewater utility is.
Uh I have a comment to to verify the wastewater utility is not managed. That was seen by the public service commission. That is controlled by the uh village board sewer utility. So if you're looking at this budget and you and you make a decision, you make a decision on the rate structure. That is a decision that you make as one body. You don't have to go through the public service commission. Or any injunction on it. And at all the same time is that because you're operating as a village board and you operate you operate sewer utility. You have done cases where you've taken loans out and you and then usually the village can't take a loan out in behalf of the sewer utility and actually have the village pay for that as all all residents. That's the that's the third you have. And that's a discussion. I came, you know, looking at a different way of paying it back. That's a decision process that you have as a village board member. And basically, you're gonna take a look at what each finances are looking at to make their decisions. So in the past, you've made a decision to take a loan out on behalf on the village's side and being paid off to the general. I'm serious, the tax. That's helpful.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Um split loan. I know you probably don't know. We didn't have that loan out. I was part of. But with the whole wastewater. What would be the increase that we would have to have to?
I don't know that unless I know how we borrowed so much and there must have been efficiency in the operation portion of the dollar amount. Then you must you must look and says the sewer utility is operating in a negative. That's my assumption. You borrow money for operations. And you what you do then is you take a look with how your revenues are coming in, you take a look how your expenditures are coming in, and you gotta take a look at the differences. Then you look at what type of rates you need to increase the utility fees to cover the losses in that utility. Right? You like to see where your revenues exceed your expenditure. We're in a situation where the expenditures are higher than our revenue. Now, if I understood right, we had, Diane helped me, we had a we had a loan for a long period of time. That has been paying off the the actual plant portion. That should be coming. That loan may be coming off this year or next year. I don't know when in particular. Diane? Okay, May of twenty twenty four. Then you no longer have that expenditure portion and uh if you had heard the public comment, me wanna consider looking at if the utility would be that office that you're doing. Second question.
Did the utility pay for a hundred percent of that loan or uh? Plant?
Yes.
Anything else? Anybody? Okay. We have a motion to approve the twenty twenty four wastewater budget as presented, motion by Brendan, second by McGregor. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number ten, motion to approve the twenty twenty four village budget as presented except levy as recommended.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by Moore, second by McGregor. Discussion, questions, comments on the budget as presented.
Yes, I just have. One is, you know, I think Mr. Terry brought up some valid points. We've been borrowing from, we're meeting at four hundred accounts. Equipment funds, road accounts, using TIF money that's running out to get the clip. Um. I'm not really, I'm not in favor of borrowing to make the budget. Balance. Um. That's all I have.
Wait. Anybody? Um. Um, same kind of thing. Um. We cannot continue to take loans out to supplement a budget um and expect grants and stuff to come in to supplement it. And the reason I say that is because if we're taking grants to create especially labor positions. If I was quitting a position that I was in to go work for some somebody else and I knew that that being funded by grants um. Grants can dry up. Grants can change. Grants can whatever. And then now I'm stuck in limbo, maybe going back and and uh be in that position. The other thing is um some of you, the majority of you, when we do our videos uh for running for election or online or something like that. Everyone of us have said we need to be fiscally responsible. We need to be uh transparent. We need to be, like me, we will make those hard decisions. I think by taking a loan out and and supplementing that and using TIF funds, that just kicks the can down the road. Um, those hard decisions need to be made sooner than later. If that's decreasing staff or decreasing services or decreasing benefits. Those are the tough decisions that we've been elected for to sit here and make. Um, we cannot have, just keep taking longer.
I wonder if there seems to be a misunderstanding for what we're taking the loan for, why, and how that's gonna play in? When we had that discussion, I wonder if Wayne, you could um expand on that. We're not taking the loan to cover operational.
Okay, the loan that you're being considered and then it was brought up at the K the hole. Was a considering using a loan to purchase a capital piece of equipment. You have had in the past purchased your equipment through the, I used to tell my Diane corner of the one, correct? Okay. You've been doing that purchasing. When you did, when you looked at the K the hole, looked at the process, you did not have enough funds to actually meet some of the requirements that's been placed on a general, excuse me, on your K the hole. One was, it's gonna come up later on 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 the agenda here. The other thing was, and you couldn't get, we didn't have enough money to operate, so the thoughts were, instead of doing, using the foreign one, which is a capital fund set aside for capital purchases. Decision was made to use to borrow on on that process, borrow for capital funds. It's not borrowing for operations. So those are two different things that you're talking about. However. Don't wanna mix up, well, why do you choose the different issues? So this for this is basically you're talking about your 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 actual village budget operating on your tax real basis. And you make it, you make it, the way it's set in front of you now is that you're borrowing for that piece of equipment. And then what you'll have to deal with is the interest rates the next few years the payers are.
Same way with fire truck.
Anybody else have any? Comments, discussion, any reviews?
Can I just make a clarification? So I mean, this is connected to the budget and it is and it isn't, but I know we're talking about this fourth officer. I think that's been a point of contention. And I wish Joe um Terry was still here just because um one of the comments that was made is comparison to the numbers in Rapids. So um I went on the Wisconsin Rapids website. I didn't talk to Craig Boran or Rasmussen or anyone, but I went on the website and when they list their SROs, it's one for the high school, one for the middle school. Notice that doesn't count the elementary school. So when we're talking about the numbers and the number he gave was the full population of students in the Wisconsin Rapids school system. The SRO serving the middle school, one at the middle school, one at the high school. And the one at the middle school is serving nine hundred and fifty one students. That's probably a number from last year, that population, but you can ballpark it and say one for nine fifty. The the CRO position, we're talking about adding the school desking for twenty five hours a week, which is basically sixty two point five percent of a full-time employee. So when you start to break down those numbers, I guess I just wanna throw it out there, just in case there's people watching and people out here. We're not talking about one SRO for, we're talking about one SRO at sixty three percent for four hundred and fifty five students. So when you start to break down those mu- numbers, um I did some cross multiplying. I was an English teacher, but anyways. We're talking about like a fifteen percent difference, you know what I mean? So when, I think there was a number out there like we really have four hundred and eighty percent times the crime. We're talking, when you break down the hours, we're a lot more similar to like that SRO at the middle school position. So I guess I just wanna put that out there so people don't think that we're 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 looking at that CRO position and saying that we're equal to Rapids. Again, I didn't follow the principal over there. I went off of their website, but if you go off of their website, that's.
Anybody have anything else?
I'm not talking about the fourth. I'm just talking about.
No, I get what you, I just didn't want that out there.
We cannot, we cannot spend this much and only have this much company. So us as representatives, we just have to be responsible.
And can I just, going off of that, I'm not debating like the points Joe Terry brought up. I'm not debating those. Fiscally, I understand we are in a bad position. I'm not debating what you're saying. Please don't feel like I'm targeting you or anything. I just have had that written down since you talked to her. I thought I just wanna clarify that so people don't think mean that our fiscal responsibility is going to that like, do you know what I'm saying? So I'm not pinpointing anyone here. I'm not saying that you know. I I know we need to be responsible with funding. I just wanted to clarify that.
Anything else from anybody? I don't know.
Edith President and I request a roll call vote.
Roll call vote for the motion to approve the twenty twenty four village budget as presented and set the levy limits and the motion was made by Moore, seconded by McGregor.
It's positive. Twenty two dollars and twenty nine. Um, twelve dollars and seven cents to thousand from left.
Wayne, would you?
Motion.
Oh, okay.
He does the work.
Okay.
I mean, miss, maybe I did not see.
I don't know.
That's good. Sure, yeah.
Okay, if you could, all the roll call votes, please.
Brendan. Yes. Justin McGregor.
Yes.
Justin Moore.
Yes.
Justin Bagby.
No.
Justin Taylor.
No.
And Justin Zerf.
No.
Moving on to number.
I'm sorry about my hearing.
I'm sorry.
Did you vote the affirmative?
Yes. Yes.
Four three.
Motion to approve, the motion to approve the ordinance number twenty twenty three dash twelve dash five ordinance approving change either with boundaries pursuant to boundary agreement between town of Saratoga and the village of Fort Edwards.
I will help on this because um Diane brought to my attention that there were two ordinances that were brought to forth when the boundary agreement occurred. And she did a good job of hanging on to this and making sure that when we are closing at the end, our boundary agreement has a December thirty first this year. This resolution, excuse me, this ordinance needs to be approved or processed. She also passed it across to Nick, our village attorney, city village attorney. And Nick was, his answer was, I'm glad she did that. I was just kinda surprised that this wasn't done at the same time we did the first one. And the second one, that's his opinion. However, he did conclude that we need to do this to make the agreement. Okay, I'll say it.
Yeah, I think the reason that something's done right before the, um, is because it's putting the boundaries back to what they were. Put it down. Their story recorded.
Diane.
Okay. Any? Another motion, sorry. Motion by Sailor. Your second, second by Zerf. Discussion.
Nice. Uh, if I may, uh, the two old guys that were here when this all was created, made the motion. Thank you.
Any other discussions or comments?
These are all being reverted back exact and there wasn't any sort of changes since. What was? Okay.
I have, one thing, you know, I notice when I drive through there, it's a Saratoga instead of Fort Edwards. So uh I know the signage is gonna have to change and also the signage for the housing will have to change, correct? Buyer numbers, because we all see Saratoga over there.
Um, they were until many years this year, always had Fort Edwards. For some reason, Saratoga decided to put up about six months ago their sign. I understood from the village administrator, department of the village administrator here, that the Fort Edwards sign was still here and collected and they didn't do.
Okay, I was wondering if we had this budget in or I guess we have.
I know Rick Pink, he was the administrator. He was.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on that? On the motion? Okay. So, motion by Sailor, second by Zerf, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number twelve. MOU community resource officer. Um, there's a motion to enter into an agreement with Fort Edward School District to create a community resource officer position.
I'm with that motion.
Motion by Brendan. Okay, a second.
Second.
Second by Moore. Discussion. Uh, trustees are.
The uh I plan on voting against this. My main reason is um that we hired a fourth time officer for the Fort Edwards Police Department. I would be totally in favor of it. This program is good, don't get me wrong, but the figure of thing. If we hire the fourth time officer, that way the chief maintains control over who's in there. And I also did not get this till this afternoon, so it's kinda hard to get caught up on it. And I just don't like what a lot of the structure and a lot of the uh stuff that the officers have been doing. The only positive I saw was in section five on the first page to where it says the summary shall include for each CRO. Um, I was hoping that would say if Officer Dave, don't be real serious, it needs a slump off. That you and you alone will pull them out. At the school. And in talking with council, there's uh, has he, you just?
Our council has not, but that is a direct copy as. Okay, that's, I actually take that back. That's a delayed question.
Another thing I would like Mr. Apps to be able to read this because I don't remember where, but there has been a few situations where civil erosion has evolved. And all of a sudden, school districts and business or government, police department people have been at odds and pointing the finger. So um I won't support it in its current form. The fourth officer means that that Scott's the man that will name who's gonna be there. Um, also, Joe Terry alluded to the fact that if this gentleman's in the school and he's doing one of these things, that doesn't guarantee that he's gonna be able to leave as Lon did one time to help me with an accident with injuries from the school program. I just think that um we should uh bring this back in January after Dick Apps has had a chance to review it. I didn't make that motion yet, but I just wanna hear what uh other people have say on it. And then one little trivial thing. CRO goes against thirty some years of police work. Twenty two is the chief of SRO, school resource officer. That's what he is. He's not a community resource officer. His main duty is gonna be with the school district and not going down to the Y M C A to talk to, you know. So I thought. But seeing having Nick, oh, and then also you never sign stuff like this before it gets approved. And then the signature on there, no offense, chief, should hear the official signature for the village for that. It's not the chief. Okay, I'm done. Is he still trying?
Okay. Okay, uh, trustee Randy.
Okay, I, I do think, uh, that trustee Zerfu has a lot of good issues on this and, you know, again. We hired the fourth officer. Instead of, are we, my confusion is, are we hiring a community police officer for this? Or are we hiring a fourth officer? I would say, you know, hiring a fourth officer, the chief, Chief Drew has. He can say to any one of his officers, you're going to go into the school. If they don't want to, they can look for a different position. But I, I think by saying we're just going to hire a community officer. I, I guess with, uh, trustee Zerfu. Hire an officer, he's going to be out on the road doing road duties. During the summer, when the school isn't on service, he's going to be at the school when school is on. It could be any one of our officers that chief decides to put in. I think this kind of narrows it down. I'd like to see what Nick Apps thinks of that. I'm, I'm kind of on the same page as, uh.
What's the difference between a community resource officer and?
I will take that. Um, so you understand the draft in this, this was a document that I picked up from a different organization. I was also on resource school resource officer. And also, boy, we have this identified as a community resource officer. Reasons men in a community resource office is that. The school district requested that being as community resource officer for a reason being that their, their funding mechanism is be able to be came. Um, to be more available, they're calling a community resource officer instead of a school, um, excuse me, R S O. That's the reason why it's this community. Second, I'm drafting this piece in there, um, the, if, if you look at the. Uh, breakup of the actual hours and time and dates of that, it is only for a certain percentage, which, uh, trustee. Moore talked about earlier and important on the, on the cost of it. Also, this is drafted to, and I don't know where you see where it doesn't, it's, it's, it's under the police chief, it's not underneath the school. Um, C R officer responsible to village port, it's, it's Roman numeral number. Sixteen.
At that last one.
Yeah, that's right. In that page, where the officer is responsible, the village Edwards and the chief police. While in the school position and also responsible, so therefore the control of this officer is by the village. By the village, once you be, once you know that, both trustee, the, the officer. Because you, the question came up, there wasn't being responsible, it'd be, so the police chief has complete control of this officer. Third, I have no problem, uh, if you want to give it to Nick to review. Um, I have, but my concern is there's no problem, but I want you to know where it came from, who drafted it. I did, and the reason I've done it before, sometimes I fear that if I can draft something that needly, that's not a legal document. Cuts the cost of your, of your services of your attorney. So I'm, I've followed a very close document with a different organization. Copy and paste, but at the same time, we got, we covered all the responsibility of, of the officer. Who is there and it's being pointed by the police chief and it's not an individual that's going to have that job.
So I would like also from Nick Apps, um, direction on. You know, when I was, when I tried talking about the fire department or anything with that. I have been told that I can't, and the reasoning was I can't, fifty-one percent of my income cannot come from the fire department, which it doesn't. So I'm able to call her to talk and, um, and vote on certain issues. I, I will not, and I will continue not to vote on and pay for whatever fund. We have two school employees that. The majority of their income over fifty-one percent comes from this. So I'd like Nick to. See if you can or can't do that.
Yes, you can.
And I'm happy to, I did ask some questions and he answered, you know, if anyone wants to see that, I'm happy to provide it because. I don't remember what this was meetings ago when we started talking about it, I had that same concern, so I did, um, talk to him about that. Cause I went in, originally I, I went in with a suspicion that I couldn't talk at all, but I did reach out to him to check and. Can't remember all of the questions, but he said he had these questions for me and all of them I could answer, so because of that, I was allowed to talk. So if people want to see that, I'm happy to provide it. I don't know if you have that same discussion or not, and again, if you want to ask your own question, that's fine too.
The money's been spent, you know, he was more forward.
That's.
He did come in March fourteenth at that meeting, village board meeting and clarify that. And he talked about not only, he talked about there being the double angle. The way the statute is written, it's primarily about, um. The financial piece of it, but it's not flat that. He talked about in that meeting that there's also the having influences with friends, family that could be beneficial. We also talked about the fact that. It would be that some of these things of concerns would be in established conflict of interest because. It would be under Roberts rules, which our ordinances have adopted Roberts rules, so it's kind of a double. So that's the March four, did I say March fourteen? It was the March fourteen meeting where he was here, if we want to review that March fourteen.
Fourth, my concern is, is this position going to benefit you?
So we talked about that and I was really clear that, does it impact my job? Absolutely, I can't deny that, right? Like there's an investigation going on and we need two people and one from the other one and it gets called in hundred percent. Um, so, so that's what I put in my email, um. And again, afford it or if we have time, I can bring it up right now and review it. I mean, that's up to you guys. If you want that, but that is exactly, you know, what I said, I, I brought up the, this is my full-time job, it will absolutely impact my job. Um. All of those pieces, and I can't remember off the top of my head, the questions he asked me. Um, but he basically said, if you can say no to all this, then go ahead and talk, and he wanted to. Say something along the lines and of, and because of the job you hold, you, you should be talking about this.
If I could say something about the, the definition, maybe not a technical definition between school resource officer and community. Resource officer, because I was at the meeting with the bank president and legacy foundation, uh, chair. Um. And it was, it was really important too, I know that we call it a fourth officer because it, that is what it is, but we had to be very. Uh, careful with what we use because legacy would not fund a fourth officer if that's what they were being utilized for. Um, and so it's intentional, this is what is the fourth officer going to do? Um, beyond the school, a school officer, resource officer is going to be limited there and then. During, uh. Past those hours during the summer, then they double as a, as a true fourth officer, community fourth officer is how do they utilize outside of the school? Day in the school year and, um, I'm sure that probably a lot of what they do would look like a. What any other officer would do too, but I think the fourth officer gives us the bandwidth in the department to do things that I know. Kurt Horyer was good at of providing literally resources and, um. Uh, workshops and things, because I know that, uh, he would host those things with opioids. And we don't have it in the bandwidth of the department to be able to provide that, but I think the fourth officer, that's typically the thing that they would be utilized for. Um, outside the scope of the school and that is the definition of, um. A community resource officer, which is something that, uh, legacy, uh, grant foundation was insistent that that's what it was.
Let's see, I'll get.
Go ahead.
And there is part of the part Eric included with that about a half hour rule that grants dry up. And personally, I don't really, uh, like. Them saying we won't pay for a fourth, anything for a fourth full-time police officer. But I have a little problem with that, um, but it is a fourth full-time officer, he's giving, uh. About twenty-five hours, a little over fifty percent, sixty percent of his time every week for the school. Um, that's another bad thing with, with grants, I mean, they write all the rules and we have to follow them and. I don't know.
So I do know that the conversation, uh, was, and it kind of catch twenty-two is that. Uh, we have to maybe not prove, but to show how we can fund it for five years so that their, so that their commitment would also be five years. And so, I mean, once we get it, um, I'm going to assume that the. The, uh, agreement would be for not just for one year, but five years. Which, you know, I mean, the catch rate too is we have to somehow prove that we can fund our part for five years as well.
So question is, we can't fund it now, so where are we going to cut the funding?
Okay, so you want, I do have it up. Okay, so the motion on the table is to enter, enter an agreement with Fort Edward School District to create a community resource officer position. motion made by Brandon, seconded by Moore.
You make one more comment before, I'm sorry about that. In talking about the community resource officer and the community services that could be offered, some of the things that I have. Been concerned about when I've talked to chief about it, he's open to exploring like. For community stuff, things like, um, scams. You know, workshops or whatever that would help to educate people to things like that. Things, social media stuff that puts everybody at risk, but especially our kids, that would be an extension of that. Opportunity to provide that extra level of safety to our community.
So. The motion, all in favor? Yes, I'm sorry. That's to Brandon? Yes. That's the Breger?
Yes.
That's the Moore?
Yes.
That's the Bagby?
No.
That's the Taylor? That's the Zerfu?
This should be a program, but no. We can't believe something's going to go through without our, without our. Unbelievable.
So.
That would fail.
That, that one failed here.
President Mantle voted no.
Um, I have a meeting with Nick tomorrow on another matter, not village related. I need your permission if I'm to say this. Because if he brings, signs off on it, I hate to be that simple, but you know I am simple. He said it's a big program. They can't, they take another vote in January and then pass it through, is that okay?
Yeah, could we? What if someone made the motion that we support this conditional of Nick's approval?
Okay. That's fine, we'll have to share it with him anyway, so.
I don't care.
Yes.
President. Um, to, I will also forward to him so he has a actual document that he can amend or change, because of Joe. I will forward it to him also if he wants to make any changes, so he has a.
But then it'd be better if you did, uh, the way that you started your administration.
Yeah, that's, I could send it to him and then he, based on our action tonight, the reasons why he has it.
You send it to him in the morning by meeting with him.
I'm going to send it to him tonight before I leave.
Okay.
Well, so also another email.
Number thirteen, chairman of the police and fire commission recommends retaining executive level human resource management leadership at organization. Best practices for officers of the fire department. Motion to accept performance improvement plan program presented by Eric Hummel and his assistants.
I would like. I'd like to have a discussion that before the motion goes on the floor. And the reason I'm discussing, actually, I am the one that put it in, uh, on agenda. And now that I see where it's setting, it should have been underneath, um, um. My area, I got it set in the middle as if it was brought forward by a committee of motion, so. What I want to say on this one, why it's been here in front of you. At the last village board meeting, there was a report by an investigation. On every report investigation, if you look at very carefully, there was two recommendations, one recommendation was, uh. Indicating on actual investigation for what was four. And the second was the recommendation, um, in, on that report by the attorney. This in front of you is basically associated with the second portion of that recommendation. As if, as the first recommendation was actually the opinion by the attorney to the, of the, uh, police and fire commission. Second piece was a re, uh, a recommendation by the attorney to the police and fire. Third, we also have our, uh, chair of the police and fire commission a recommendation based on his memory. So therefore, that is why I would look through the, the actual recommendation by the, the chair of the police and fire commission. And also seeing what, uh, Mr. Hummel was, was providing in the performance improvement plan program. And before I think the motion can be really adhered to, we need to, you all got a comment, uh, description, what the actual. P P I consists of. And there might be questions, you can put the motion forward, but they, but basically there may be some questions that needed more clarification, that's why I missed Mr. Hummel to be here. And the chair.
Okay, so everybody understand that? Okay. There's. Does anybody want to make that motion?
I don't make that motion.
Motion by Brandon, is there a second for that motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it just to get some indication.
Okay.
Is this in print somewhere?
Yeah. We were emails. Um, I believe, yes. Trustee Zerfu, I'm sorry, go ahead.
May I go up, be able to ask, uh, the chairman about the program and then possibly, uh.
With objection, go ahead.
Um, what, what just all was failed with, uh, either one of you guys?
Um, that would be this area of expertise. Yeah, I mean, we discussed. So, yeah, I, I, I agree. Yes. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to say a couple of things. I'm here and I'm to share what performance improvement plan is, what a coach would do. Um, instead of advocating for anything, not my job to advocate for anything. I would ask to put together what is a performance improvement plan, how does it work? And if a coach was involved, what would that look like? So that's what I've done. Uh, what I have, what we have before you is a, a, a description, fundamental pieces. I want to be clear that a performance improvement plan is not a disciplinary act. That's really important to know. Uh, what it is done to do is to define a process with unlimited basis. To identify some, uh, areas of, of improvement that need to be made. And, uh, with, uh. With, with input from the supervisor, anybody else that the supervisor chooses to, uh, decide about. Finding what areas need, need, need to be included. Uh, the coach part, the coach in a, in a performance improvement plan is not a typical. Uh, activity and the reason why, because that's a very expensive process. Uh, however, uh, we're willing to do that because it's, uh, it's cost free in, in, in this case. And, uh, I'm willing to be part of that. Um, and the job of a coach is to assist person in an improvement plan to, uh, expeditiously. Uh, move forward in whatever the, uh, areas of skills, capabilities and outputs. That, uh, the supervisor and the board decides are, uh, needed, uh, and to do it in a timely fashion. Uh, so, um, that's kind of what, what I'm here to tell you about. Um, and, um, I, I'll provide entertaining questions with the other. The question, you did state this as nothing you can do this. Correct. It's not a disciplinary act. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for Mr. Hummel while he's standing here? Any other questions? But thank you, Mr. Hummel. Okay, any other discussion on the matter of motion? Yes.
Um the role of the PFC, um, as far as the yeah, so if it was not, this is not discipline. Um, the PFC is firing, firing.
Yeah, sure.
Um so this was, is it, it's technically a recommendation.
Yeah. First, I mean, clarify what you're asking, are you asking in reference to the investigative report that's done? CERN improper internal promotional process. So I read wrong, this is well, was okay, to, to your point, I don't think it rose to the recommendation, discipline should be sold out here. No. Um, that's a problem. But it's not, it's going to be addressed in a disciplinary manner. So to your point, yes, that takes the PFC out of the box. And that's why I think the recommendation goes to incidentally, we've got a pro in this area that may be able to. Any other questions or comments? Do you?
Can I give you a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
We're not. I didn't have my hearing aids turned up.
I'm going to have to put you guys both together.
For the point of everybody in the room, would we ask that Mr. Hummel present his qualifications?
Yes, I'm sorry, I thought it was a, a little bit.
But for the public's sake.
Sure.
Sure. Um, so I, I read somewhere where it was like thirty years of experience in human resources. I want to clarify that.
I know.
Um, I'll, I'll give you a very short history. Uh, I have a private practice psychologist for nineteen years in Madison. And uh worked a lot with business, business development, uh executives, leadership kinds of things and so forth. And also was the uh worked uh with the smoking company, sports medicine. Next seven years, I worked uh stuff, practice, consulting company that provided expertise in how you improve organizational design, processes and systems. So there were fewer mistakes, fewer errors, investment class uh activity. After that, actually, I got hired by one of the uh clients. Had uh in California. Uh, and went out to California for fifteen years and worked in human resources there, uh, in one company. Um, that was the head of leadership development for the company, from manager all the way to executive. Uh, I was the head of uh human resources in, in another company. Last, uh, complete cybersecurity area, I did uh internal coaching. Well, as organization design and looked at processes and systems within uh that company that could improve um the performance of particular parts of that with it's very specific to what it was, it was a cybersecurity company, so it had to be top-notch. So that, that's my history and that adds up to a lot more than thirty years, but it's not all in human resources.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm just throwing it out there that.
Perfect. Okay. Uh, motion by Grunden, second by Zerfu. We're going to vote on this now, if um, nobody else on the table has any questions at all. I hesitate to go off table because we're getting very long. I guess can your question wait for after meeting?
I'll, I'll.
Yes, does anybody have an objection to going off the table? They're really if it's on this topic, it's a question, that's fine.
Okay, I just, I have no idea what's involved, because I haven't seen first panic. Eric, don't get me wrong, I trust you, I hear you, you're a good guy, we get along great. Um, I don't know how deep this is going to go. It's like we hang on team to pretty standard operating guideline, the procedure, the work instruction, everything you do. Say it doesn't cost anything. Unknown because we have to, we need, we need to. And I, I have no idea what this is.
I think if that's, please don't continue with this and then you can bring it. On it, once we vote on it, um, so we need to vote on this yet, so all in favor of the management leadership and organization best practices um with the fire department for the plant performance improve, improvement plan, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose?
Nay.
Nay.
No, passes. Oh my god. So we're on to unfinished business from previous meetings. I guess, do we have any unfinished business? Okay, new business. Um, report from the village administrator.
Okay, what I have uh in here, I've been working with uh, actually, from the uh fire department head and person seeking for grants, uh, we went, um, we had assistance from one of the trustees, uh, indicating that there's a certain area that can portion of grants, so I reached out to Lexible um, in creating for turnout, turnout year for grant application, which is one of the issues that has been brought up by the fire chief and even some other members of the fire department that has a very need, and of course, we didn't be able to budget this year, so what I was asked of the fire chief was to, would, would it be possible that the association would participate on the cost of that program, which would be two thousand five hundred dollars? Um, based on the chief's uh comments with me tonight, he, he even asked, and I'm asking the same thing that you authorize this subject to the athletic club, any chance to vote on it if they want, for the two thousand five hundred dollars? So we'd like to move forward, but he still needs to get the athletic club commission to fund it. If they don't, then we cannot move forward. That's how it's set up.
Okay, is there a motion to authorize interim administrator and fire chief to apply for Lexible grants for turnout here? Move. Move by Zerfu, second.
Me, sure, it's a subject.
Which one wasn't, I'm sorry. Reddick, okay.
It's important that it's subject to the athletic clubs. But this is by financing the two thousand five hundred. We need that to make sure that it's grand.
When is the, we need that in the motion?
It's important to have that because that's.
Not in there now, so do we need to restate the motion?
That's right. I would ask that you restate it, I mean, how would I would say it? Authorize interim administrator and fire chief.
Do you want me to restate the motion? Will we make the motion?
So.
Audience be a subject to the athletic.
Need to add the subject of the athletic associations.
Approval.
Approval.
Yeah. Okay, we added it.
Most, most, thank you.
I'm sure you're on nineteen sixty-six.
Um.
Okay, so this is to apply for Lexible grants. When is the meeting for the athletic association? So just so we know when it, so we know when the next meeting is. Okay, motion by Zerfu, second by Reddick to authorize the interim administrator and fire chief to apply for Lexible grant for turnout here. Subject to the athletic association's um, approval. All in favors to the. Oh, sorry.
I am floored that the relationship that the board has with the fire department right now um, and the toxicity that that is involved with, and then now you're asking the fundraising, you're fine with fundraising having the fire department fundraise the money. And now they gave a goodwill for the possible squad car, you turn that down, you're going to keep the funds, and now you're going to nickel and dime those funds to find grants to benefit yourself. Um, I would hope that the membership would vote no against it and then allow you guys to try to figure a way to unprovoke the, the necessary gear that is required.
So. Okay, so all in favor, I'm going to add a, sorry. So, and I'm just looking for clarification, when we talked about this, I know, I know people don't want to go off table again, I get that, when we talked about this, I guess, um, on public safety, I was under the impression that I don't want to put words in your mouth. I thought the fire department was on board with it, and I know obviously that goes beyond the fire department to the to the, yes, athletic association. Guess am I wrong in that? Do you know what I mean? If, if fire department's not on board with that, then obviously, I guess we vote for them. I'm saying. Do you guys, were you guys under the impression that everyone was on board with this when we put it on the agenda? On board with what?
Like, are you being on board or the fire department being on board? That's what I'm asking.
If I, I'll answer, help you answer that. The fire, the fire department has the athletic association group, that is a nonprofit organization and makes, and generates funds. And they determine where they can, determine where those funds can be used on, on, on a annual basis. Other, I'm the one that put it in the, the actual motion or movement in a, in the email to chief warden, asking that they would consider this to, because of um the need and the, during the budgetary process, we had a hard discussion on the need of this portion. So I, and, and to let you know, I'm the one that made that request of the chief, chief uh warden. Um, it's still, he, I, I was corrected today in email that is actually the, he has no authority over what the association does. That's why they have to have their separate meeting to make that goal on it. So it really is up to the association, which is made up of firefighters. And that's, and that's what I mean, that's why it's subject, because there is no, I have not got that approved yet from the association.
I think in order to offer the fire department or the athletic association a level of safety and not nickel and dime the seven thousand, we need to return it to them until, and let them offer money as they choose that. I just say, the seven thousand is not going to be sent by the village, it's in the fire department. It's not a separate fund, but I have a separate spreadsheet, it's their money. I go let it sit there until they decide. Yeah.
And that actually is not, we need to overcome the problem.
Well, I was just responding to Eric.
Thank you.
Is there any other, no, Dwayne kind of clarified how it was out here, any other questions?
That's why there needs my report.
So, all in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Certainly. Done, okay. Okay. So reports from the clerk treasurer. I cast the motion to authorize clerk to pay the bills for the remainder of the twenty twenty-three year.
Make a motion.
Motion by Reddick, second by Zerfu, any discussion on it? No. All in favors, and fire is saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Very.
Make a motion to fight the primary election workers, special holding deputies, stretch water and substitute workers as presented for the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five election, and you should have that.
None pathed back.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by Saylor, second by McGregor, discussion. So discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, number eighteen, oh, sorry, anything else? Uh, trustee comments for number eighteen. Uh, trustee Reddick.
I guess the only comment I have is, you know, if we have these frictions between any employees of our village and village board, we need to mend them. Fix them. Uh, we used to have a fall party, all the employees were invited, everybody. We need to mend those, those bridges. I don't like to hear that there's friction, we have to mend them and do it in a responsible way and do it. Now. Bye.
Anybody else? Meeting, meeting calendar, I think I wrote them all down, and I will send an email later with them all. So Public Works will be meeting at, on December twenty-seventh at nine thirty AM. That will be followed by parks on the same date, at twenty-seventh at ten AM. On January second at five o'clock, we have public safety, six o'clock pit. Then F H R will be January fourth at four o'clock. So I miss anybody. I think, we have C S G there on Monday. Okay, without objection, I will adjourn meeting at eight forty-six.